Okay, I have six o'clock. And as much as I hate to break up this great conversation, I am going to call this City Council study session in two orders. So will everybody stand with me and say the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'm going to do a quick roll call. Councilman Owen?
Here.
Councilwoman McGoffin?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilwoman Burns?
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Allen?
Present.
And Councilwoman Lavaca?
Present.
Great, okay. So we are going to move right into the confirmation of Daniel McElwraith to the position of police chief with the authorization for the mayor to negotiate and sign an employment agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I'm going to go ahead and just kick it off with a little bit of background. He doesn't need much introduction. I know, all of you know him well, but we'll start with the fact that Chief Tucker is retiring at the end of August, and that's really what precipitated this recommended promotion. In December of 2021, the mayor and I interviewed Lieutenant McElwraith and decided, the mayor decided at that time to offer him the position. It's been a long-awaited confirmation and promotion, but that was very intentional. Give the chief a lot of credit for announcing his retirement early so we could do a lot of planning. And the reason why we're doing this, recommending this action tonight, is we have a series, a whole domino effect of things that need to occur leading up to the chief's retirement. We have other promotions that are to be announced as well as swearing in of various folks who are moving around in the police department. So we had to work with everybody's calendars, their availability, and this was really the first date. We also wanted to have some overlap, as we did with Chief Klinger, with Chief Tucker outgoing, and having Chief McElwraith step in where he'll be able to be in the chief position, really starting next week after he's sworn in. And then there'll be that overlap time where Chief Tucker can be there to be supportive and to help him out with anything he's missing, but it makes for a very smooth transition. So that's why the timing is the way it is. And then back to Lieutenant McElwraith. So he has strong support both internally and in the community, guessing from the council as well. Certainly from the mayor and I, we're delighted to have the opportunity to work with him. He's been a part of our senior management team and our senior leadership team for, basically, since December. So he's been working with us already, essentially in the chief role, of course, being respective of Chief Tucker in his role as well. He has three years as a lieutenant with the police department. He's got over 20 years total of law enforcement experience. He's been with us about 20 years. He's actually got a couple of years of corrections experience as well with the county, 11 years as an administrative sergeant and patrol sergeant. He was a detective for a year. He's been a patrol officer for five years, was a SWAT team member for 11 years, and, as I mentioned, a corrections deputy as well. He's educated with Skagit Valley College Associate of Arts from there. He's graduated from Burlington Edison High School and has a lot of certifications. I included all this in the packet. I'm not going to read them all off. I did want to highlight one, which was the middle management and first level supervisor certification that he received last year. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Lieutenant McElwraith, and he's here to answer questions you may have. And we're just delighted to recommend him for this position. We're asking the council to confirm him and then to allow the mayor, to authorize the mayor to enter into an employment agreement with him. So similar to the finance director, basically the same kind of process. So with that, I'll step aside.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the community as the police chief of this city, along with your approval. I don't know if you guys know too much about me and my family history and such like that. And while I grew up in Boe, graduated from Burlington Edison High School in 1995, I know I wanted to be a cop when I was a kid. I used to be in the backseat of my mom's car and just sound my mouth for a siren. And, boy, they hated that. They'd always look around and see what's going on? Where's the cop? And so it was really early on that I knew I wanted to do this. I did my reports in high school about being a police officer, took tours of the jail, and did that in the college and in high school. So I just knew my heart was in it for that service, and I had a lot of respect for police officers and wanted to do that all along. And I had the great support of my family. And when I actually got a job as corrections officer, my dad was very proud. I wish he could be here to see this moment, but I know, I know he's proud anyway. My family's very proud of that as well. Yes, I did graduate from the Skagit Valley College. I didn't know much about Cedar Valley when I, when I came and came to work here, just being straight up with you. Most of that time was traveling as a kid, down to the end of the road, Cook Road, the red flashing light, stop sign, going to church, Bethel Assembly. We'd go in and out of there at times. We went to several churches as kids. But I remember that pretty much. Other than that, high school, sports, competitive sports, wrestling and football. I remember traveling here and being rivals. Now my kids, I got married, I got two kids, one's in college, Montana State, and one that's in the school system now, doing sports. I have come to love Cedar Valley. It's a great school district, great town, great community. You know, I'll jump back. It's like, I moved here. I lived in Burlington when I got hired here. I moved here and became a community member in 2005. I didn't know if I was going to stay here forever, but I quickly learned this is a place for me. The way the city has treated me, the way the community is treating me, it's, it's great. So moving on, my, my kids are going to be well-established in this community. Hopefully my other daughter comes back from Montana State and establishes herself here. And I know my younger daughter's heavily involved in sports, and so we're looking for some change in the sports process and, and getting that going in high school with basketball and soccer and track. So again, thank you for the opportunity. Do you have any questions of me?
Are there any questions for the lieutenant?
I got, I got a statement, if you don't mind. I had an opportunity to do a ride-along, which you set up, and I'm very grateful of that. And I think Brendan had a little bit to do with that. And the team back there was amazing, and riding with Seth or Officer Bath and, and Harry, and just the whole team working well together and their attitudes. But then seeing their, you know, after-incident stand-up review, just to discuss what happened and how things worked out, it was, it was unique and it was impressive. And I realized there was real leadership that was working with that team and that everyone in there were leaders working together. So very awesome to see, and you got a great team you're stepping into. I know that you had a big part to pull that together, and I'm very excited for it. Do you have a cartoon picture set up yet?
Lynn was trying to make one for me. He has, he wants a better picture of me. I'm sure that'll come, though. I think that's on his agenda.
Before he leaves, of course.
Yeah, yeah. We'll see what he does. Hopefully no cross eyes or anything, so.
I don't have a question. I just want to tell you how proud I am of you, and I can't think of a better person to fulfill this role, so.
Thank you so much.
I would like to say that I appreciate you working here for over 20 years and hope you plan on putting in a number more years before you decide to retire. But I appreciate your service, and I was glad to sit down and talk with you probably a month and a half ago and get to know you a little bit. And I think you'll do a good job, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say thank you for your commitment to the city, and I think you're a great candidate, and you're going to do a great job, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to say I'm happy for you. You've been around here a long time, like me, and I'm sure you're going to do a fabulous job. And you've got a little bit more hair than the other chief, but I hope you can hold on to it.
Not much longer. Julian probably remembers me when I had hair. Same as Sarah. Yeah.
Yeah, I just echo everything that's been set up here and knowing you over the years in various aspects of life. And you're true to who you are as a person, and that comes through in your job and as an individual. And I think that that's very important in character. The relationships that you make with the, with the community members, with the staff and the people on the department, the relationship and the camaraderie between fire and police is fantastic. And you guys can poke fun, have fun, but support each other. And to see you out, out there also, sitting down and having lunch with the elementary school students and stuff like that, too, and, and being in the school and being present as, as an individual, and showing them in the community as well that you guys are, in fact, people too. You know, you've got families, you've got children that, that you go home to. And, and, you know, and so I just think that that's something to be proud of, and I'm very excited for your next step.
Thank you. I'm very proud of that as well.
Dan, I already congratulated you. So anyway, you know, same as everybody else here. Good luck and best to you.
Great, thank you.
I love all the support that you're receiving here. I just want to add one thing that I was really impressed with. I have been impressed with you. You are an excellent officer and a great leader. But it was quite, I don't know, it said a lot about who you are. When I had your sergeants all come and meet with Charlie and I, and they looked me directly in the eye, and they said so many wonderful things about you, that you were their leader, and they, you were the person that they wanted to follow. And they talked about the situations that you had been in, and you had been able to master them in a way that, you know, made for a really good outcome. And so I already had it in my mind. I knew what I wanted to do, but, boy, that really solidified it. So very glad, very glad that teamwork is, yeah.
It's great to have the support and the team atmosphere that we have. It's, it's, it's been great. It's, it's also family. We're, we're that second family. We're, we're small, we work together all the time. So that's just a nice environment for us.
Excellent. So the recommendation here is a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment, my appointment of Daniel McElwraith to the position of police chief with the authorization of the mayor to negotiate and sign an employment agreement.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilman Burns. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And we'll see you here, we'll see you here next week for the swearing in.
Yes.
Please do. Okay. I just want to make one comment. I was going to do it at the top of the session, and I didn't do it. But wanted to apologize to the council because on our agenda, it shows that we are not scheduled to have meetings on the first Wednesday of June, July, and August. However, our code does not state that. And so when that was brought to our attention, we realized that we did need to follow through because you have to give at least three days' notice before you cancel a meeting. So what we're going to be bringing before you is a motion to cancel the first Wednesday of both July and August, so we can have those off. And then, well, I don't know if we're going to go in and correct the code, or if we're just, that's for discussion, so.
Yeah, that, that could happen. Right now, our intention is simply to cancel those, those two meetings. And then at the first meeting of each new year, the first regular meeting, we would bring that action forward to you as well. So we don't get in this situation again where you're going, surprise, there's a meeting. I didn't know. We don't like to surprise you ever.
Because we do, we do confirm the, the agenda at the beginning of the year. So as Charlie says, we can omit those two. And then that way, we don't have to worry about it come July and August. So, okay, moving on to number two, which is the check-in regarding discussion about Resolution 1088-22 in objection to mandated vaccines. And so, Nick, do you want to?
As you guys know, this is a resolution that I'm pretty passionate about. I think everybody's read it. I still feel passionate about it. I think that, obviously, the governor still has the emergency powers to put that intact. I know that the Supreme Court ruled in certain ways for OSHA, and we are under a different one. So I know it doesn't do much, but it would be, I feel it would be nice for our constituents to show solidarity with them in support of their right to choose what's right for them and their families. And so I stand by my resolution that I put forth.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for Nick? I should say, Councilman Lavaca, I apologize. Yes.
I'm passionate about a great many things. And other things that I've heard constituents either bring to my attention or that I've discussed with them that are outside our purview, outside the things we can control. I feel that it's our job to stick to the things that we can control. And I understand your passion with it because, like I said, I feel it about other things. And I completely understand you wanting to be able to control that. At the same time, I also don't understand us taking time away from other things that we can be achieving. We don't want to take up the, the time that we could be spending on business development or helping our community in other ways. And so I don't understand pursuing this. I don't understand pursuing a route that we have no control over. So I would urge you, as well as anyone who's come to you and anyone who's come to me about this, to contact the representatives who do have control over it, because that's really where you can make some change.
Councilwoman Kestie?
I guess I'm just confused at how this would take away time from, like, the business development if we're, we've already looked at it. If you are just stating the fact that you believe that everyone should have the choice within our community and our, our city. So I don't, I fully support it because I don't see it as taking away from anything, but rather just showing everybody that everyone has the right to do as they please. I don't see how that takes away from us because if we dealt with it now, you could either put it to bed or say, yeah, this is great, and then move on. So I don't understand. I would, I would support it.
Anyone else? Councilman McGoffin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I admire the passion, and I just want to say that I appreciate bringing forth things like this for discussion. And, you know, we all have an open mind here. So I want you to be clear that, like, there's no judgment. This is all something that we're going to discuss and that everybody has a right to their views and passions. So I just want to open with that. And I've had discussions with people about this, with businesses. And I think for me, what it comes down to is it's a very divisive topic. And I totally, you know, get being in solidarity with the group, but the problem is we're picking one group. And there's a lot of other people on the other side. Pharmacies, people that have had loved ones die because the hospitals were full. And there's a lot of frustration and anger on both sides. And I think as the city, it is a little bit out of our control. So to pick one side, it's kind of like saying, this part of the community, we're going to support you as the council. But the other part of the community, we're not going to support you by this vote. And you're kind of making that decision for each council member that they have to choose what part of the community they're going to pick on this side of the argument. And, you know, regardless of whether the vaccines are right or wrong, I just don't know if the outcome of us doing something is going to be beneficial when it's not just about your decision of, you know, is it right or wrong? It's the decision of, this was the governor. This was someone above us that made this decision. And to pass a resolution like this also flies in the face of him and the government that made the decision by saying, we are standing in opposition to you. So it's not just about, is this a right or wrong? This is also a stance. We're protesting. And I think as council members, we have to be really careful of staying in our lane. So that's what I'd like to say.
All right, thank you. Councilman Owen?
I agree. You know, I think a person should have the privilege of making his own decisions. I take all the precautions I can because I'm a lot older than you guys. And if it does any good, I don't know. But if they say it does, I'll take it. And I've had, well, I've had two and, and a booster and another booster, so. And I might get another booster, who knows? But if it becomes rampant again, I'll just remove myself from here and go back to my Zoom. And I'm not going to force anybody to do anything. But, but I said, like I said before, I think a decision like this is made higher up. I don't think it would do any good for us to, to make a decision like this because if, if they push it again, it ain't going to be any good. You have to do, you take an oath to observe the laws of the state, and you have to, you have to do it. Not, you might not agree with it, but that's the way it is. But I understand the girls, too. You know, they might want to get in their family way again, and you don't know what that stuff will do to you. So I'm sympathetic to them. And I still think a decision like that should come from higher up. I do, I really respect you girls for your belief. And anybody else? I make my own decisions, and I live with them.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, that's right.
I would pretty much like to put this to bed tonight. And I'm with Chuck. You know, I've had my shots in a booster. That's my choice. But I, I, I don't want the city to try to overstep its authority either. That's just a gut feeling, you know, vote the rascals out of office at the state level. But, you know, that's just my feeling. So, anyway, thank you.
All right. Sarah, did you?
When it comes to this, I fully agree with where Nick is coming from and the, and the situation that it is. I don't want to take away anybody's rights to make a choice in their decision and what they choose to do. I know people that have gotten sick with it. I've gotten, know people that have gotten sick without it. So, you know, at this point, quite honestly, we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of these mandates rescinded and brought back. You know, I, I don't want to see it necessarily fall off the table because it is something that could come back in the future. So if it's something that looks like nobody's really wanting to move forward with at this point, I would suggest that maybe we revisit this in six months, four to six months, and, and see it again, not knowing what is going to be happening in the future. But right now, it looks like there's a lot of mandates that are being rescinded when it's coming to the, the vaccine in and of itself, which is what this is in regards to. Because medical, medical opinions are changing. I've had, I've had, I've personally gone and spoke to, you know, four different doctors, several nurses that have worked in different areas, in different cities, and in different practices. And I don't think there's one of them that has given me the exact same response, which is very interesting in the sense that it's, it should be, it's based on science. So unfortunately, this has become very politicized, as, as Brendan kind of alluded to. You know, but, and science takes time. So, you know, if it's something that is very passionate, and I completely understand respecting everybody's opinion to choose, maybe we sit back, let it, let it sit for another four to six months, maybe four months, and revisit it again in the future. And, you know, we can just choose to table it at this point, not knowing what it's doing.
I definitely appreciate everything that everybody says. And I do respect the councils on all of that. I've had some good discussions with the mayor and with Brendan on this when I first proposed the, the actual resolution. And so I think that, I think silence does speak loud. And I think that sometimes people feel like, well, we're the people and we should have a voice. Where do we go to? So they go to the next line, and then the next line, and the next line. The higher up they go, the further removed they are from where their constitutional rights are and the relationship, because they don't necessarily have a relationship with Keith, or they don't have a relationship with Jay, or they don't have those relationships where they might know us and say, is there anything you can do? It's definitely not something where we can do anything. And I respect all of the hard work that the county has put in, our, our cities have put in all throughout, and don't want to cause any division within that. I am, I'm down to, if we want to vote on it now, to let it go completely and not revisit it, then we put a vote in for that. Or if we want to revisit it, I don't see, I see the, it coming back in, in fall. And just for some, I don't know why, I feel like it will. So that's obviously just an idea, and there's no, no evidence to that. But as the seasons change and it rises up, as it's already started to rise up, we start to see more laws come into effect. And at that point, it might be, well, bringing it up at an even more tenser time would probably not be wise. So it's kind of like sending a letter. And somebody recommended this to me, and I think it's a great idea, sending a letter to Texas as a, as a body of city council to say, hey, we definitely stand with you guys. Our prayers are with you. And it's just a letter that says, this is, we're standing with our community. We're kind of voicing our community. But as you mentioned, Brendan and Joe, it is a divided step. But I think a voice is already made, a decision's made with silence. And that's voiced to me, and it was voiced to me a lot more heavily during the, during the event of the mandates, and especially the deep fear and stress that was induced with the going all the way to the Supreme Court on the OSHA decision. And, and there was a lot of people that were deeply concerned and didn't know where they were going to turn. And still, people in healthcare that have already lost their jobs, so. Is that something that we want to motion?
I'll be honest, tabling it for another day is kind of what I was hoping we'd just avoid. Either let's do it or get on with it. It'd be my opinion.
to. Um, you know, but si- and science takes time. So, you know, if, if it's something that is very passionate and I completely understand respecting everybody's opinion to choose, maybe we sit back, let it, let it sit for another four to six months, maybe just four months, um, and, and revisit it again in the future. And, and, you know, we can just choose to table it at this point, um, not knowing what it's doing.
I definitely appreciate everything that everybody says. And I do respect the councils on all of that. I've had some good discussions, um, with the mayor and with Brendan on this when I first proposed the, the actual, um, resolution. And so I think that, I think silence does speak loud. And I think that sometimes people feel like, well, we're the people and we should have a voice. Where do we go to? So they go to the next line and then the next line and the next line. The higher up they go, the further removed they are from where their constitutional rights are and the relationship, because they don't necessarily have a relationship with Keith, or they don't have a relationship with Jay, or they don't have those relationships where they might know us and say, is there anything you can do? It's definitely not something where we can do anything. And I respect all of the hard work that the county has put in, our, our cities have put in all throughout, and don't want to cause any division within that. I am, I'm down to, if we want to vote on it now, to let it go completely and not revisit it, then we put a vote in for that. Or if we want to revisit it, I don't see, I see the, it coming back in, in fall. And just for some, I don't know why, I feel like it will. So that's obviously just an idea and there's no, no evidence to that. But as the seasons change and it rises up, as it's already started to rise up, we start to see more laws come into effect. And at that point, it might be, well, uh, bringing it up at an even more tense or time would probably not be wise. So it's kind of like sending a letter and, uh, somebody recommended this to me, and I think it's a great idea, sending a letter to, to Texas as, as a body of city council to say, hey, we definitely stand with you guys. Our prayers are with you. And it's just a letter that says, this is, we're standing with our community. We're kind of voicing our community. But as you mentioned, Brendan and Joe, it is a divided step. But I think a voice is already made, a decision's made with silence. And that's voiced to me, and it was voiced to me a lot more heavily during the, during the event of, of the mandates, and especially the deep fear and stress that was induced with the going all the way to the Supreme Court on the OSHA decision. And, and there was a lot of people that were deeply concerned and didn't know where they were going to turn. And still people in healthcare that have already lost their jobs. So. Is that something that we want to motion?
I'll be honest, uh, tabling it for another day is kind of what I was hoping we'd just avoid. Either let's, uh, do it or get on with it. It'd be my opinion.
Do you want to make a motion?
Um, I'm not quite sure how to do that. I'm, make a motion to move this resolution forward.
Is there a second? To move it forward as in?
Is any, either we go forward, sorry.
Either we go forward and write a letter or present that as, as a, a letter just to the county so they know how we feel, um, or to just say, okay, we voted it down and we don't go forward with it. So it's either moving forward or we're not moving forward.
So you're actually asking the council then to make a decision one way or the other because not everybody will sign the letter?
Okay.
I, I think you heard, I think you heard.
Should we vote? Vote to, yeah, go ahead.
I think you heard from four, they're not wanting to do that. So I, um, does the council want to second that to push it forward or not? You don't have to?
So if it.
You don't second?
If it goes to a vote and it goes yes, then we would proceed with Resolution 108822. If it goes to a motion second and, and it's voted no, then it would?
Die.
Okay. So there's a motion on the table. I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca and it's seconded by Councilman McGoffin to move this forward. But it sounds as if, and make, make sure I got this correct, actually in moving this forward, what you want to do is to write a letter to the commissioners stating that as a council, we are opposed to, um, the mandates. Is that, have I got that correct?
Yeah, it would be a pretty small, short statement that says that we stand by the citizens to see the goal and what's under the mandate.
So this is not the resolution, but this is something different?
I was, I was thinking the resolution would be the thing that would go forward. The resolution is, is the letter. Is, is the thing that we would submit in.
Okay.
Sorry, in that case, I just want to clarify. So we're voting to either approve or deny Resolution 1088-22? Is that?
Yeah, basically yes.
Madam Mayor, one more time?
So, so we had a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, um, to, um, to approve this resolution, basically, is what we're saying. Because he wants to see it as a letter sent to the, to the commissioners. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that's how the resolution reads? It's, it's, it's actually more like a, um, a proclamation. So it'd be actually a proclamation that would go to the, to the commissioners. So any more discussion? Do you understand? Does everybody understand? Okay, so he made a motion to make this, to, to make it go, to send this to, and then Brendan seconded that, that he approved?
He approved the opportunity to take a vote.
Oh, okay, okay. I was confused on that. Okay, thank you very much.
And I'd just like to clarify that I respect your opinions here, our Councilman, Councilwoman Diamond. I just feel like from a fundamental point, I'm going to vote the same in four or six months. Um, I can't speak for everybody, but I think, uh, for Nick's or for Councilman Lavaca's sake and for the community, I think we just need to make a decision. So that's why I second.
Which is what Councilman Burns said too. Let's either move this forward or we end it right here tonight. Yeah, I agree. Okay. So Charlie, for clarification, just so when this is read into the record, this would be, we are either approving to move this forward, um, and we'll send it as a letter to the, uh, county commissioners with a yea. Everybody would say whoever votes yea. If we say no, then it dies right here.
That's certainly what I heard.
Okay.
The, the sending it as the letter part, this is splitting hairs, but I'd recommend you send a cover letter and just attach it, um, in terms of that. So we're not rewording the whole thing and maybe getting a skew from the intent.
Yeah, sorry. Is it worded in there to send the proclamation or a statement to the county commissioners to, uh, and the resolutions for us to send a statement to the county commissioner?
Um, all I have here, uh, what, the way that I'm reading it is that it's, it's, it, it reads as a proclamation, but it's, you're calling it a resolution.
Or not resolution, proclamation, yeah.
Um, it's because it says this resolution. So, um, yeah. Are you guys ready to take a vote? Or do you want to, um, send this back and have it rewritten? Or what, 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 what do you want to do?
I'd say we have a motion on the table. Let's vote on it.
Okay. So, um, all those in favor of moving this forward, um, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have, um, three to four opposed. The motion does not carry, so the motion dies. Okay. Thank you, everyone. That was a good discussion. I really appreciated hearing everybody's opinion.
I do too. That was really good.
Thank you for engaging in that. That was a good discussion. All right, moving on then to the next piece, which is the city council strategic planning session follow-up and next steps. And Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and council. Uh, so what we have here in the packet tonight is, uh, follow-up materials that we received from the consultant, Paul Horton, who helped us with the strategic planning session. Uh, his notes from the session itself, uh, including the breakdown of the different topical areas that were identified. And, uh, he's captured a lot of what was on the sticky notes and put them in an organized fashion here. And secondarily, a PowerPoint presentation that he put together, and this was all a part of the original scope of work, on how to, um, kind of move from where we are, uh, to getting these into finite focused goals, uh, that will be effective. And so I wanted to back up a little bit from that and what I wrote in the council policy memo. There's sort of a series of questions there, um, right on the first page. And I know there were some concerns from council, uh, expressed in the last couple of meetings. So the backing up even on what's written there, because I wrote this a couple of weeks ago, would be, uh, to ask the council if you want to move forward. Um, because I know there were some concerns and I'm wondering if the council wants to continue with the goal-setting process or not at this point. I would certainly recommend that you do. I think it's helpful to have strategic goals because that allows the city to make decisions that will leverage on them, on each other essentially, and move us in a direction, uh, that we want to go, assuming that we're clear on where it is we want to go. Uh, so I would certainly recommend we move forward. I, I think there is a process here, uh, but I, out of full respect for the council, it's always your choice whether you want to move forward or not. So I thought we'd start there.
Madam Mayor, may.
Councilman, yeah.
And so I, I propose this, uh, follow-up strategic planning meeting, um, with you and then we later with Charlie on the idea that we would have more of a discussional topic. Um, at the first strategic planning meeting, we, it didn't feel like we had an opportunity to really discuss a lot. It was more of a very guided and structured, which is a great way to do it. But I think having the ability to discuss things, you learn a lot from each other. I learned from Chuck that he liked, he would like to see a little bit more enforcement on the municipal code. And I learned from Glenn that we would like, Councilman Glenn, Councilman Jackson, sorry, that, uh, does, that he would like us to kind of stay in our lanes and, and kind of focus on city, um, management ideas. I learned from Jo Ellen Kestie about, you know, growth and her views of it schools and the importance it is with her. And, and Joe, he brought up growth as a very, uh, taught topic that, that we needed to talk about and address is, is a number one thing. And from Sarah, who had, you know, a great idea, coining the phrase responsible growth, and then coming out with ideas on, on combating, uh, some of the challenges that we were facing when it came to staffing or finances. And so we only had a few minutes and that's what we gathered out of that. So it would be really cool to have more discussion time about where, where we are and, and build on that rather than to have, uh, so much structured to where we don't have that freedom.
So I'm going to have to say in all fairness to us, we did set that up and you were the only person who showed up to talk with us and Paul Horton. So all we had was the information that you gave us, which is why during the strategic meeting, we had to back up and do more work. We didn't want to do that. We wanted to move forward with the topics that you guys wanted to see and hear. But you were the only one who showed up for the meeting. And that was via Zoom. And it was this invitation that was sent out to everybody. So, so that was offered just in all, in all fairness to, to, to us.
What, I don't know that, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, council. I don't know if that's, if we knew what that was. Well, I went in there thinking that that was, was it more of an introduction and a way to toss some ideas out, not the full kind of, uh, discussion. Cause the classes is, the session was a rather long session, which left, you know, probably a few hours within the, the structured and the setup. And we learned a lot about what we love about business and safety and ideas that we shared and ideas that we kind of have conflict on and ideas we're hard no on. Um, but we didn't really have a, a time for discussion with each other. We're kind of talking to somebody or some, uh, through a channel there. So, you know, being able to kind of debate with Joe or Joe Allen about certain things or Brendan about why he feels this way, or he brings out certain things and certain policies that were voted on, that's like, oh yeah, let's, that, that is a good point. So it gives an opportunity to recap on why certain things went forward or why they vote in certain ways. I think that's beneficial to you in your full overall strategic planning to know where the council is, how they agree, um, where the, where those yeses are, the, the 70%, let's go forward, the, the 20%, hey, let's work this out a little bit more. Then the 10%, no, this is hard no, we won't do that. Um, and it gives you the opportunity to plan forward. And it also gives the opportunity for the council to have ownership in that plan. And that's just how I felt about it, which is why I brought it up.
Go ahead, Joe.
I actually have to agree with Councilman Lavaca. Um, I, I think that it would be great for us to be able to sit down and kind of discuss with each other more directly. I, I love the format of that. I thought it was great the way he walked us through things, kind of gave us the opportunity to, uh, you know, build your own adventure, so to speak, to kind of figure out what we were looking for so that we might delve into ideas that, uh, maybe we hadn't even thought of discussing with the council. Um, so I, I think that that was beneficial, but, um, it would be great for us to be able to sit down and discuss those more in depth and kind of, uh, hash out more details of what the council's really looking for. Cause it kind of felt like we ended up with broad strokes. And I, I get now where you're going with for that first meeting. I actually thought it was just to meet him. I, I didn't get that much from it, uh, from the email. And, uh, I had to work that day, so I was unable to attend. But, uh, no, I appreciate that. That would have been great to help guide what he was, uh, planning on doing. So, yeah, thank you.
I'd just like to add the first strategic meeting we had with the round table that was in here. Um, I felt like there was a lot more dialogue in that format, uh, with just the, the council members and the directors being able to have that frank discussions and bounce ideas off each other. Um, having a mediator was nice for a change, but I think, um, in the future, I, that'd be my preference. Um, I think we all bring to the table good visions and goals for the city that I think if we had a chance in a forum to put those forward, uh, we'd have good results in that too.
That's good to know, because I put that one together. So that makes me feel good. Thanks.
Yes, I actually, I, I will second Brendan on that. I actually, the round table that was in here was probably the most productive and I felt like I was getting a lot more out of it. Um, we could have candid conversations and talk. Um, I just have to be very blunt in that I, I really don't prefer the last one that we had. Um, but I've never preferred any of them run that way. Um, I, I, I have a hard time with the, um, imagine this and, and that and pulling this stuff and not, not knowing the structure, where this information is going and what, what we're doing with it. Um, I'm, I'm very fact oriented and direction oriented. And so for a, a long time during that session, I felt very confused and lost and why are we doing this and what are we doing? Um, and so, so I really do feel like, you know, the, the round table was very productive. And I feel like we have a lot of, um, we might all have opinions on council as we all should. We're here for a reason, right? Uh, but at the end of the day, I, I, we, I think we all respect each other. And I don't think that there's any, any ill feelings between anybody on any personal levels. And so, you know, we might have a heated discussion about something because we're passionate about it, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there's an issue that requires a mediator. Um, but that's my personal opinion. That's my take. Um, you know, we're all here putting on, you know, in our spots to make hard decisions. Um, and, and we're just going to do the best we can with the information provided to us.
All right, thank you. Yeah, um, I want to give everybody a chance to chime in. Anything else? Okay, so, good feedback, in my opinion. That's really good feedback. And, um, and I think that we're going to take that to heart. In fact, I know we will. Um, because our goal here is to move forward with you and to move forward with two or three strong plans, strategic plans. And, uh, so, um, we're going to use that. And based upon that, then let's go back to the question that Charlie presented to us, which was, do, do you want to move forward with the process now? Do we, do, should we move forward with the process now of coming up with strategic plans?
Are we able to have that dialogue, I guess, is where, where I was kind of going for. Uh, I was thinking this venue would be that. When we discussed it and I was kind of throwing out the ideas of us being able to discuss, I thought that's what we would be doing on June 1st. Um, and I think that even proving in the resolution when it first went out on, uh, February 2nd, the civility we have in, in discussing with each other i- is so incredible that we can agree to disagree and we come from different views and we bring great information. So if we have that opportunity, that's what I would love to do.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, I would just like to add too, that I don't know how much we would get by what was recommended of doing, was that small groups and coming up with more goals. And then, um, it does seem like it'd be a significant amount of time for each of the council members. And I'm not opposed to doing it. I'm just saying I don't know how much we would gain compared to just having a round table discussion and hashing it out.
I agree.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, moving forward then, Charlie, do you want to move us forward and we'll see how far we can get? Um, I can tell you in the past when we have done this, and we usually do meet at a, in a round table and we do have a discussion. Then we come back and usually there's three topics that come to the forefront and then that goes into, um, the packet, the budget packet. And that's our strategic plan for the year. In this case, it'll be for two years because it's a biennial budget. So, um, so Charlie, do you want to lead us through and see how far we can get with this? Do you have?
We could certainly go there. I'm, I'm hearing, uh, comments from the council that you'd prefer to have a different seating arrangement. Uh, so I'm wondering if we want to have a special meeting on this topic or carve out some other time, uh, to follow up and do it that way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of for that. If we, we planned a date that we were going to do that and then get around the table and, and then hash that out, I think that would be more beneficial.
Okay. Okay. I, I do have a question. I'm wondering if, if there are, if there are two or three topics that we could all agree on tonight or possibly agree on? Do we have some commonality? I'm, I'm thinking maybe we do. I've heard all of you chasing right after my heart, my passion, and that is economic development. So I think maybe that's one that we can actually talk about and have further discussion on as to how we want to see that progress.
I think from the sticky notes, if I remember correctly, it was business, uh, business. And then it was, um, uh, growth was in there, but kind of like obscured within there. We just didn't have the growth. And when Joe brought that up, it really honed in, yeah, that's a hot topic. It's one we wanted to address. So those were the two. I, I love Parks and Recreation to see the town kind of grow in that way. But that's just me and...
And that's a good, and that, and that is a good one.
And I still have a committee, or we're, we still have a committee together for doing other things to bring to the council. So.
Good deal. Okay, good deal.
Mayor, if it's helpful, uh, Bill has pulled up a sheet that I put together. If, if we wanted to kind of focus it on those topics that were identified in the previous session, uh, that's, that's what was distilled from that session at a very high level. Um, so it's business, economic development at the top, then safety, just public safety, community-related goals and input, third one, small government and streamlined government.
And streamlined government, yep.
Fourth one, recreation's the fifth one, housing, housing availability, diversified housing. So housing is a strong topic. And then finance, and I believe that is it. So those are at least the ones that were distilled out of that session. Uh, one idea I had tonight, if the council wanted to do it, was, I was originally thinking I'd put these up around the, the walls and you could dot vote them. And I'd give you a bunch of dots, but I got, I decided that wasn't the, going to be the easiest way to do it in this format especially. So we could just quickly go down and if each of you wanted to give yourself three votes, you know, you could spread those out in three different areas or put them all on one area and we could out in three different areas or put them all on one area and we could just do that live and Bill's prepared to fill in that sheet and score it for us.
If I were to go down the line, would you be able to maybe pick your top three?
Or we start at the top and just let everybody go down the line?
You want to do that? We can do that as well. Sure.
Then we're all.
Okay. So, how many of you would vote for business, economic development?
Aye.
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 That looks like all of them.
Sounds like one.
Safety.
What is that inclusive of?
I think safety has to do with fire EMS, the police.
No.
Oh, we're just going, so those are the...
I think it was just brought up. It looks like, though, it's not triggering anything for anybody.
I don't recall what the parameters of it were. Let's step away from it for a minute then, maybe we can come back. How about community-related goals and input?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I lost the ball somewhere. I thought we were still talking about the shots thing, but I have something to say.
Oh, yes. Okay.
I don't say very much here, but, you know, seven years ago, I decided that I wanted to run for council. And I put in my application with the county and I began to serve my, present my resume for the whole month of October. And I guess the people accepted my resume and they hired me. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I work for the people. I have no boss here, the mayor, or you, Charlie, or not my boss. You can't fire me. You can't hire me. Only the people can fire me. And that's the way it should be. But when I went to our, I hate to get too harsh, but when I went to our council retreat and when I walked in, I was ready to walk out. It was awful. I mean, here sat this dude telling me when to take a break, how long to take a break, when to take my lunch, how long for lunch. There was no, no coffee. There was, there was nothing. Peanuts and, I'm not a squirrel. So, I was disappointed with that. And then, when he started his presentation, I almost did get up and walk out. It took me back 76 years ago when I was in the first grade and doing all these little notes and sticking them on the board. I'll be honest with you, Charlie, I got absolutely nothing out of that. And I'm opposed to it. I, you know, we're a council and everybody's responsible for their constituents. We're also responsible for taking care of the city, make the city runs. But I don't want nobody telling me I have to go to a seminar or participate in this because it's just not my thing. You know, I'm 84 years old. I'm not a kid and I don't care about writing little notes, sticking them on the board, so. I got absolutely nothing out of it. I don't know about everybody else and I was so disappointed in, I've been to a few retreats since I've been on council and they were all nice and really relaxed and we talked between each other to things that could be done for the city or to make things better or what we would like to do. And we just said what we wanted to say and they were real good retreats. But this one was nothing like that. It was just a seminar is what it was. And there's seminars out there everywhere. Madam Mayor and myself went to one when we were first elected to office. And it was, it was good. It was a little bit off sometimes, but it gave us some good information on our job and what we can do, can't do, and what we should do. So, I just don't, I think if people want to volunteer to do that, that's fine. But I don't want nobody telling me I got to do that because I won't. And I hope, I hope I don't aggravate you or make you mad at me. Mayor and I are good friends, I think. I hope we still are, but hey, apples are apples, man. And we're the council and we take care of everything ourself. And we're completely neutral from the city, actually. We're here to do city business and that's our, that's our goal. But the first person that I'm responsible for is out there in my ward and I handle their complaints and do what I can. If I can't, I go hire. And I've got a good bunch of people in my ward, so. I like my job. I enjoy being on the council and I'm getting older. I won't run again, but it's been, it's been a good ride. But some of these younger people, you know, the world's different for them. And, but I hope when we have another council retreat, it's really for the council and the council can discuss things between them and, you know, make things better if we can. So, I hope I'm not overrun my decision, but that's me. That's the way I feel.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Owen. I have to say, when you were talking about hiring or firing, I had some second graders in here last Thursday and we were talking about, you know, that they see me as the boss of this and the boss of that, which is funny because I don't see myself as the boss of really anything. But they, then I asked them, who's my boss? And of course, they named the president and the governor and, I mean, all those are legitimate and whatnot. And finally, I said, no, my boss are your parents. I have to answer to your parents. And you should have heard them. It was just, it was absolutely so funny. And, oh, no, no. And they're like, I can't believe that you answered to my parents. But it is. It is what you say. The people voted us in and we represent the people and we answer to them. So, yeah.
Your responsibility is a little different than ours and mine. You know, you have to run the city. You have to make decisions. You can hire and fire city people, but we can't do that. We're just...
You have to approve, you have to approve it, though.
Yeah, we're just kind of like sitting ducks, you know.
Sitting ducks.
But we have to, we have to be a council. We have to be kind of independent and we've got a good council here. A lot of, a lot of different ideas. Nobody thinks the same way.
No, I agree with you. And so, we were looking at, I don't know if you had a chance to do this, but up on the, on the board there is actually a list of the things that we did talk about at the retreat. And so, we're trying to pick possibly three strong ones to move forward with and to have discussion on. And so, it didn't look like, I went to community-related goals and input. I didn't hear from anybody. Is anybody wanting, yes?
It seems like, I guess that's a broad stroke, too.
Right.
With the community goals, because you can tap in the recreation, you can tap in a lot of different things. So, that's the reason why I probably held off on that one just to...
Okay. Good. That's a good thought. Okay. What about small government, streamlined government? And I'm not really sure what that, what that means, but that was, that was, was up there.
I think that was because if we get more directors from more departments and more government and things like that and we build more out, so it's more cumbersome for people to interact. I think, like I said, it was, I don't know if that's what you guys got.
What I kind of understood from some of that, the small government or streamlined government was, you know, still having the open door, allowing for the open door policy and those sorts of things that allow people on different levels to get answers quickly and not have to go through five chains of command to find an answer. Not having all the red tape that goes into having two or three committees approve something before it gets to a council decision and those sorts of things. You know, just trying to keep things streamlined. We know that there's growth. Nobody can deny that. Cedar Valley is getting bigger, but still trying to keep things smaller in those realms so that we can make decisions and move when we need to move quickly without it having to take months and months or going through, you know, so many chains of command, I guess, is, I think that was my understanding of discussions from that specific time.
So, did you want to give a vote right now or do you want me to step away and come back after we've looked at the others? Because it sounds like we're kind of torn as to what this means.
No, I, I think Sarah just coined it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's, well, well...
Okay. So, all right then, let's go ahead and maybe just see a show of hands. How many would like to see this as one of the strategic goals?
I'm tied on this one because I have two more that I want to do.
We can go back to it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we'll come back. Yeah, we'll come back. So, recreation.
Aye.
Okay. So, how many said yes? So, I have three. Are there any down here? Four, five, six. Okay, six. All right. Housing, availability and diversified housing.
Aye.
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 Okay. Let me see hands here so I can, one, okay, okay. So, four, okay, six. And finance. I have but one.
It seems so broad, too, because you're bringing in business to increase the finance and you're looking at better ways of spending money and things like that. And I just figured with our finance committee and, you know, we've got people kind of dealing with, I know that we have committee for some of the others, but...
Right. And the finance committee's currently working on the housing project as well. So, it's kind of, some of this is all kind of intertwined.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
That's perfect. So, you think it will be covered then to your...
Well, yeah, because it might be counterproductive to this, to the finance committee to have another area where they're, while they're trying to plan things out and then these people come from the side.
Okay. Okay. So, then I'm gonna go back up to the small government, streamlined government. Did you want to vote for that or do you feel like you've hit your top three that you want to really delve into?
I only had three votes. Mine, mine are used.
You do only have three votes. Did you vote, yeah. So, okay.
Take away the finance one's online.
Okay. Okay. Well, it looks like we have the three. So, so we're gonna bring forth the business and economic development, recreation and housing, housing availability and diversified housing with the thought that finance is going to be woven, interwoven into all of that. How does that sound?
Correct.
Add a little bit with the community developments kind of interwoven with the recreation.
Okay, we can do that, too. All right. How does that work, Charlie?
That's really helpful. Thank you all.
Okay, good. Perfect. All right. Was there anything else then?
I think just our intention on what we do next. So, what I heard from council was, at least in brief discussion, roundtable, and that we would look at a special meeting. And I wanted to check in with council to see if that was, you were okay to do that, maybe in the month of June. July gets busier and we can work on dates with you. But if June might work, maybe we can find a Thursday night or something. We'll kick around some dates and be...
Or even the third, the third Wednesday?
Third Wednesday could work if people are available.
But that depends upon you guys' schedule.
I'm leaving on, which I wanted to bring to you guys. I'll be out on my 20th anniversary, pre-anniversary trip. So, on the Wednesday of the 15th, I believe is that Wednesday, but that, that I would be out of town. So, if you're, do your permission, then I take that up. I might be able to get wifi at the house, but I'll be in Idaho, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we want you to be a part of that discuss, I'm speaking for the council.
Yeah, yeah. I definitely want to be a part of that.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, that would be awesome.
Yeah, so that third Wednesday would work?
That third Wednesday would work?
Wednesday, the 22nd, I think, or, yeah, Wednesday, 22nd.
So, you would be back?
Yes.
Okay. So, is that tentatively a good date, Wednesday, the 22nd?
My understanding is that for me, it should be. We were going to tentatively have a finance committee meeting, but we haven't heard back on a date yet because they were working to try to get a possible presentation.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll just...
And maybe that could be earlier.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Whenever.
Okay.
So, it hasn't been scheduled yet, so this should be fine.
Okay. Yes.
Just, just for clarity. So, Wednesday, the 22nd is a normal council meeting night.
Oh, so what's the win between then? That would be the 15th then?
Would be the 15th, but there's also the 29th.
Oh, the 29th, yeah. Oh, I forgot. We have five Wednesdays, don't we?
29th would work, right.
Yeah. So, the 29th? Everybody's got their calendar out looking at it, so, no. Okay. So, that is the last Wednesday of the month? And, all right. And we will set tables up so that we have a chance to keep it informal and be able to really talk to one another.
I propose an idea of like a set time on each, on each topic. That way, because we could probably get excited about one certain topic and kind of run over. And if we have that set time, at least we'll hear a bell or something and go, okay, next topic and leave it kind of, and then revisit it at the end or whatever, but at least it'll give us that.
So, is that something that you would like to propose now or do you want to think about it and propose at the evening of?
I'm not, who, Charlie, would you be setting up the forum on that meeting?
Yeah, we could just set up the agenda in such a way that we basically try to time limit each of the areas.
Yeah, 15 minutes each or 20 minutes each would leave time at the end to recap back, loop back on anything that didn't get, if you guys are okay with that. Yeah.
Excellent idea. Okay. Anything else, Charlie?
No, thank you so much.
Okay. Good. Good deal. Okay. So, one, anything for the good of the order? Because it looks like we are at the end of our list here. So, I have, I have just one thing. I know I brought this forth before, I think I did. But I want to remind everybody that we're gonna do safety training here at 5:30. Maybe I didn't bring this forward. So, we're gonna be doing safety training here at 5:30 on June 22nd. So, I realize you will not be here.
I think you're on June 22nd.
Oh, okay.
Excused on the 15th.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion moved and seconded. I don't think I need to take a vote.
Aye.
Perfect. Love it. You guys are, you guys are really so... So, anyway, I will be sending this out via email, but I do want you to know that that was a concern, especially with the gentleman that came in who has some mental health issues. And I know that there were questions about what do we do if there's somebody who comes in. I was shocked to learn, as probably you were too, that over the weekend, there were 18 mass shootings and they consider a mass shooting four or more victims that have been shot and that does not include the shooter. 18 over the weekend. So, it's getting crazy out there. But we need to know what we need to do to keep ourselves safe. So, the chief and the lieutenant are gonna be coming in and at 5:30. So, if you can come in a half hour before and we will go over instructions as to, and maybe even drills, as to what we need to do should, and God forbid, a situation arise where we need to take cover. And maybe it's even an earthquake. What do we do about that, right? So, so that's, that's all I have. Anything else from anybody?
Yeah. Maybe we can get some flight jackets for everybody. Bulletproof.
Yeah, how heavy those suckers are. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, thank you, everybody. Excellent discussion and good direction from you to us and we appreciate it. And you all have a good night. See you next Wednesday, the 8th, 6th.
Don't excuse him and happy to be here.
Hey, thank you.
By the way, Wednesday, actual, I'm Thursday.
It's on July 13th. Because we're 20 years married, but we've been together for 23 years. So, I don't know, we rented a house on Porter Lane, Porter Lane, yeah, got the dock and the beach.
Just so the weather's good.
Right?